I didn't actually go to it.
I think it looks like they gave them another couple of minutes.
That's pretty bad. Is that picture on?
Oh, what?
Like, how many times do we leave there?
Well, I can't be for you.
Done it. I got two to four.
Did I what?
Purple.
All right. We can nobody too soon. Can you have fun with it?
I believe seven or thousand. Wow.
Let's call him me. This all stands west.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We read the continuity of government. This meeting of the town council is being hailed for sale through April thirteenth, twenty twenty ordinance for the continuity and the government who write. The town first to read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronic. In person, attendance as public is limited subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and basic guidelines issued by Governor Norton. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the town council. And have you called well, please?
Hi, I'm Brett Spry.
Here.
Mr. Bickers.
Here.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Shallow.
Here.
Mr. Lancaster.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Ms. Pence.
Here. I would like to-
For what reason?
Um, I'd like to add two items to our discussion today. I sent, um, you an email last week asking for two items to be placed on the discussion. Uh, the first was consideration for town council as well as the executive leadership team of the town of Lorraine to receive PR media training, crisis training, and some more inclusion and diversity information. The second request was that the community be offered classes as well around inclusion and diversity. I did hear back from Joey, thank you for emailing me around some of his ideas, but I think it'd be great to have just a little discussion from us here today.
But you know, it's been a standing rule, we always have two people to add to the agenda or take front, and I don't think Steve received it or told me to.
No, sir.
So we'll just put that on the agenda next month if you get somebody to go along with it, calling the events.
So nobody's willing to talk about that?
No, we don't do long with this agenda. The Louvre Parks Association, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. The town of Lorraine has been maintaining the, uh, property owned by the Lorraine Park Association since about nineteen forty-nine. There was an agreement at that time to establish the relationship. Uh, unfortunately, we've not been able to locate a copy of that. Staff, uh, working with our attorney has developed a draft, uh, agreement, uh, that would identify what the responsibilities of the town would be as far as mowing and removing, uh, debris and whatnot in the parks. And that is, uh, included in your agenda. Uh, when we had previously discussed this agreement, uh, council had requested that, uh, Lowell Bond with the Park Association provide an overview of what the association is, and Mr. Bond, uh, is, uh, has remotely connected with us and, uh, has provided council with a copy of, of his presentation, and at this time I'll turn over to Mr. Bond to talk through, uh, the history of the Park Association.
Uh, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate y'all. Um, the, uh, Park Association's been around for a little over a hundred years, and most people have never heard of us, so don't know exactly what we do, so I thought I would come here tonight and fill you in and answer any questions you might have. Steve, the next slide.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is the Lorraine Inn. Uh, this is where it all started. This, this hotel was built in eighteen eighty-one, uh, on the top of Enlawn Circle. Uh, it had fifty-four rooms when it was initially built, and two years later they added another fifty-four rooms. It had hot and cold running water, it had, uh, electric call buttons to bring a porter up to your room, and it had, uh, gas lighting. The Oriet U, the, of course, that Carriage Drive, that's the Enlawn Circle, and the center chimney up there is right about where Eddie Hall's White House is, and that was the main entrance to the hotel. Uh, it stretched to the left almost over to the Lorraine Christian Church, and to the right it stretched well over into what you probably know as John O'Connell's front yard. And we believe the additional fifty-four rooms is built toward the rear of the hotel, and on a dry day you can see the foundation, uh, in my yard with the grass, uh, the foundation's close enough to the surface of the grass turned brown on top of it, you can see the corridor walls and the rooms on the other side. So it, it was a, quite a big hotel. It was owned by the Lorraine Cave Hotel Company, which at that time was the Lorraine Cavaliers'. And, uh, people came on the train and stayed at this hotel and a couple of days and visited Cave. Uh, and then also people in those days, even though there were sleeping cars available, a lot of people didn't like to sleep on the train, so they would buy a ticket, come and stay over at the hotel overnight, and get up the next day, practice, and go on to, on the next train. And there were a number of these hotels scattered up and down the Shadow Valley. Uh, there was one in Lansbury, which is now Stewart Hall, the girl's school, and of course Hotel Run Oak is one. They're all owned by the, by the railroad. Uh, next slide, please. This is what the hotel looked like on the night of November the fifth, eighteen ninety-one, a mere ten years after it was first built. Uh, it's rumored that it started from a candle in one of the upper rooms, and of course, uh, Lorraine Fire Department at that time was probably not much more than a real company in there. Once it caught on fire, there was just nothing they could do. Fortunately, they had enough grounds around it that, that probably prevented from burning the town down. So, uh, after it burned down, uh, it, the land base held up for a while, some of it was sold off, there was a, they had a lake on the property over there between Amos Avenue and Blue Ridge Avenue. That property was sold off, and little pieces were sold off, but bulk of the property stayed in one tract. Um, and so if Steve, if we go to the next slide, um, and it was bought by the Lorraine Land Corporation, uh, to, uh, develop the subdivision. And in nineteen seventeen Vernon Ford, who was the president of the, of the land company, uh, wrote to his friend, Edwin C. Harnsberger, that, uh, if Mr. Harnsberger could get a few people to help him purchase a hundred feet along the railroad, uh, to give an entrance so people could come on the train and then come over into the park. That, uh, the land company, they were donating, what was donors lost, three, four, five, six, and seven of the entire subdivision to create a public park for the town of Lorraine. The subdivision had been planted in nineteen thirteen, uh, and they had sold all some of the property by that time. Let's go to the next slide. So the, the Park Association was formed in nineteen seventeen in December by Vernon Ford, who was, as I say, president of the land company, and he was also the father of Will Ford, who built the Ford House, Road Tech House, and now the Cobb House. Frank Grohl was a partner in the Grohl and McKay, which most of us know as the Lower Drug Store, McKay's Drug Store that morphed into Butler's Farm, I see. Charlie Grohl, I'm not sure what he does, I think he moved to the farm. Charlie Andrew was president of the Page Valley Bank, Edwin C. Harnsberger, who is my maternal grandfather, the fur mill, a creamery, and ice plant. Theodore Northcott, by that time, had bought the Lorraine Cavaliers'. And Thomas the Ford owned the, uh, the General Pantry. Let's move to the next one. Okay, the, so they formed the, the, the association, and the purpose of the, of the association is, is benevolent, and that is the establishment and maintenance of a public park in the town of Lorraine, Virginia, which shall not only be an ornament to the said town, but also a place of enjoyment and recreation for all its people. It shall not be an amusement park operated for profit. And in another section of the, of the establishment, it says the trustees should not sell or encumber the park, the park property. Um, one of the reasons you, you may recall, we've had lots of events in the park, and we don't charge for anything because we're not like charged, uh, as, as if we were operating a park for profit. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, in nineteen seventeen, the park was formed, uh, and the- Can you see my pointer?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Lots three and four, well, let me get your order in a little bit. Of course, the Enlawn Circle is there in the middle, the brown at the bottom line, that's their railroad station. The purple lot to the left is the Lorraine Christian Church. The purple lot above that is the Episcopal Church. And the subdivision was founded by the Red Lines that ran down Amos, ran down Big, uh, down, uh, Phil Heights, and cut across the level where Larry D's and Susan D's live now, and came back around behind the Road Tech's house, and back up to, uh, join basically the Zarke Street and run on down to the park again. The lots three and four are the pieces of property between the Enlawn Circle and the Christian Church. Uh, four, five, and, uh, basically, yeah, three and four. And the other three of lots are the ones in the center of the circle. The square between the Enlawn Circle and the railroad station is the property that was bought by the five gentlemen, uh, Mr. Harnsberger, Mr. Northcott, uh, the Groves, and, uh, and Mr. the Ford. They paid five hundred dollars a piece, probably for twenty-five hundred dollars. The park also, uh, acquired that little triangle of land below the Davis House where Jameson joins, uh, the circle. And so that was his, the original part of, of it was established in nineteen seventeen. By nineteen twenty, the, there's an alley that runs from Amos Avenue, if you can read the numbers on there, which are upside down, but it's, it's partial thirty, there's an alley that ran across from Amos Avenue to the circle. That alley was vacated, so that alley reverted to the park, and also a portion of the bottom of Eddie Hall's, uh, front yard, so that the property line for the park runs along the base of that bank, where it, where it is now. Next, please. Uh, this is a, of course, you're familiar with the, with the German gun that's, that's sitting in the park. Uh, this is not the original gun. Uh, this, the original steel piece is put there in nineteen twenty-six, uh, after World War One, but during World War Two, uh, they contributed that weapon to back end strap drive, and after World War Two, this gun, which is there today, which is a World War Two artillery piece, was put, put there as a replacement. Now, that is sitting on the hundred by hundred foot lot that was purchased by the five businessmen to make access from the railroad station over to the park itself. Next, please. Okay, by January of nineteen forty-five, um, the, uh, tennis court had been acquired. The town, uh, uh, purchased that lot, they had been maintaining the, the tennis courts for a while, and they purchased that lot from the residual property of the land corporation, and they donated that to the, to the Park Association. Next, please. And then, in, in December of nineteen forty-five, repurchased the, the pro, the property that ran from the, where the cannon is, down to Campbell Street, along, uh, and bought that from the Page Valley Company. Uh, so, so that is all the property that is currently within the, uh, the Park Association property, Enlawn Park. Now, if we can put along one. Next. Okay, you all know this is a Lorraine singing tower, of course. Uh, in nineteen thirty-seven, Colonel Northcott and his daughter, uh, Catherine Graves, that's Ted Graves's mother, um, built this memorial to Colonel Northcott's wife. He had come here, uh, she had tuberculosis, and, and he'd come here to see if the air in the cave, one of these, the air in the cave, had upper condition. When she died, he, uh, built this, uh, as a memorial to her, um, and it's one of the few, not, I wouldn't say terribly few, but most carillon towers are attached to buildings such as churches or other in community buildings, town halls, or that sort of thing, college buildings, but there are a few in this country that are a single freestanding, what they call a camp and daily style, uh, towers, and this is one of them. You can go to the next slide. Okay, this is, this is a little picture of Jesse Radcliffe, who has just left us, and he was a carillon engineer. Uh, this is how the instruments play. There's a keyboard device up there, as you can see, and the top row of levers represents black keys on the piano, and the bottom row represents the white keys, and you, and you'd also play the larger bells with your feet, similar to playing an organ. And through a series of levers and, and cables, uh, the clapper, the bells are stationary and the clapper is brought over to make the sound. Now, to qualify as a carillon, you'd have to be able to be played manually, uh, with expression, which means, uh, he can hit it easy, he can hit it hard, he can make a loud, he can make a soft. You have, have down twenty-three bells, we have forty-seven. Uh, and, uh, and Lorraine, most people don't know this, but this is, this carillon is world famous, and we have folks come here to play on this carillon from all over the world, and some of the disciples that are played in the summertime are guests who have come from, from all over the world. Next, please. This is the center for the performing arts, of course. Uh, pal, uh, I mean, uh, the Park Association also owns this building. We, I can't read quite all that's up there, you all can read that. We, it's, uh, we purchased this building in twenty thirteen to assist pal in, uh, in their financing package, and we leased back to them, and they have an option to buy it back whenever they, whenever they wish to do that. So, uh, we amended our charter that would allow us to not only deal with parks, but we could also deal with, uh, anything that would perform in arts, and that's how, and we provided this building to assist pal with their, uh, with staying in the community. Next, please. And then we support other organizations in the community. As you can see, the library, uh, in nineteen sixty-eight was looking for a home, and they approached the park, uh, as to whether they could buy the property there on the corner, and of course, we can't sell them any property, but we permitted the library to build it on that piece of property, and of course, they expanded in two thousand and three, doubled the size, and as long as it remains a library, uh, they can stay right there. If they close the library, go someplace else, the building reverts to the park. And then the Page Heritage, uh, Association, the Page County Heritage Association was looking for a place to put the mess, not a school, one of the last, that one room school was in the county, and asked us if we could, if they could put it in the park, and we, we agreed to do that. They own the building, and there again, we own the land still. So that's what the Lorraine Park Association is and does. I'm the president, Dale Alpus, vice president. Jesse has gone on to Texas, uh, advancement in his career. Susan D's is treasurer. Mayor is always a member of the park board by virtue of his job, and Perry's done a wonderful job for us. John Graves is a member because the president of the Lorraine Cavaliers' is, is a member, and Rudy Tate is the other member. Next, please. So that's the history of the Lorraine Park Association. We hold property in trust, which supports recreational and historical and cultural programs in the community, and we hold them in trust for the people in, in Page, in Lorraine and Page Town. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Miss Vaughn, I got one.
Yes?
I, I think I've heard the story, but the so-called slave block that's between the, the artillery piece and the school, how did that come about? Now, who owns that?
Which issue you don't know?
The, the slave auction block, I think it's called.
That, uh, that, uh, was put on as park property complex, Fred Henson, who was a black minister-
I remember him.
-of Westfield, and they actually put that up as a total monument for people to recognize that, uh, that there was slavery in Page County, and we agreed they're letting put that somewhere.
Cause I remember at the time, I think the, the words on the signage was well thought out, at least the way I looked at it. Thank you, that's a good presentation.
Well, Reverend Henson was largely responsible for that.
Well, are you familiar, is that stone the property of Lorraine Park Association now, or is that Page County Heritage? What's your understanding of that relationship?
Of the, of the stone?
Yes, sir.
But I think the stone probably belongs to Park Association. I think the, uh, I know that the local library belongs to the Page Library Association, and, uh, and the school belongs to the Heritage Association. Uh, I will, I do wanna make a few remarks about, cause the question is, why is the town of Lorraine maintaining the, uh, the Park Association's properties? Uh, as early as, uh, nineteen eighteen, nineteen, in there, in that area shortly after the park was formed, the trustees met the town council regarding getting some financial aid, uh, for a couple hundred dollars a year to defray the expenses of maintaining the park, and apparently the town agreed, and Ex-Service Law Minister showed it, uh, they made an annual contribution, town made an annual contribution, maybe two hundred, hundred fifty dollars a year, and by nineteen thirty-seven, there's mention of income received from the town of Lorraine's park levy. The park levy, uh, I can remember the park levy being on the town's, uh, property tax bill. And I can't remember exactly how it was done. It was either five cents on each piece of property, or it was a small percentage of the, of the property tax. But in any case, the park levy was then collected by the town and turned over to the association so they could mow the grass and, and, uh, trim the trees and so forth. And, uh, that went on for quite a long time. Then after World War Two, during Harry, Harry Dyke's time as mayor, the town, uh, sort of said to the Park Association, instead of us turning it over to you, that, well, we're collecting on the levy, why don't we keep the levy and we'll mow the grass and we'll, we'll do the tree trimming and so on and so forth, and you won't have to go out and hire an independent contractor, we use town, uh, folks. So that went on for, uh, from that time forward. They just, the town kept the levy and just, they took care of the maintenance. Well, I got on the park board plus or minus nineteen seventy, some, somewhere around there. I came back here in sixty-five, and within four, five years, I got on the park board. Um, and about that time, during Fred Walker's term as mayor, the town made a major overhaul in the town code, and during that, it was a big overhaul of the town code. They eliminated the park levy from the town tax code or whatever. And so when we realized that it happened, and I appeared before the town council, and I can't give you the date, but I came out of the town council and I pointed out to the council that, uh, that this levy, which realistically was, was slated to be turned over to the Park Association, but then had been kept by the town and returned for maintaining the park. Now it disappeared from the, the tax base, and that the park now had no longer, had, had no longer had any, that the basis or support for the maintenance of park. And I asked the town council at that time, does that mean that the town is going to maintain the park property in perpetuity? And the answer was, I guess so. So that's all I can tell you about that.
Does anyone know when the right, the town already started to have park land? It seems like from this nineteen forty-five, the town was using extra dollars buying a tennis court and turning it over to Enlawn Park, a association, private association. I assume that's because we didn't have park land at that time? Is, can anybody provide verification on that?
The only thing I could tell you, if, if, if we got it, it shows in the minutes, that in the minutes of the association, that the park board, that property, will turn it over to the park.
I would just say, probably basically, the, the park authority just kind of operated as a de facto recreational parks department to a certain extent. That's kinda how I see it, and it eventually transitioned to the town maintaining. So I think it's probably the early days, town's government was limited, didn't have a rec department, and these are the people who stepped up and provided that. That's how I would see it.
I actually do agree with that. I guess my point is that we think they already have the park system now in place. Um, the purpose of this association was to maintain a little park in the town of Lorraine. Um, they're at a point where they can't continue to maintain those parklands, they have come to ask, to ask us to pay for that. Um, it seems like this is the time to merge, uh, Park Association land into the town of Lorraine, if we are already maintaining it. Um, we really don't have, there's not a benefit to keep it under private control, especially the extra dollars that are being used to maintain, but also do enhancements on the property. That's the way I see it.
But it's my understanding from Lowell that the, the deed of the property does not allow the Park Association to convey it to any other entity.
According to this, it's-
You're not allowed to sell or to come.
Right, so you, you could give it, you could donate it to the town of Lorraine.
Anybody else got any questions for Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, Mr. Voluntary Doctor, where was the auction block before it was moved to the Enlawn Park? Do we know that?
I'm not sure. I, I, it rumored it was somewhere up on Port Street, but I, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
According to the book I was telling you gentlemen about, it says it was on South Court Street in, in back of the home of Yates.
Yates?
Yates.
Well, Miss Vaughn, the way I'm thinking is that the Enlawn Park, all that area up there is, is like a public park, since nobody can build on it, nobody can charge money with it. I think we're in a good position now as a town to leave it like it is, cause I don't see any reason to try and buy it from them or ask for it to give to us. The fact that we're mowing the grass provides a nice place where people have picnics, kids can play on the playground equipment. It seems like it's a, it's a very good equitable situation for me. I appreciate y'all doing what you do.
Really, it's a tremendous asset to the community, cause I'm sure everybody's taking their children, grandchildren.
Well, the singing towers now, that's the number one spot to get your trumpet, I know, I've seen it.
Hey, Mr. Vaughn, this is Joey Sowers. Uh, how does it work as far as liability? You all, you all have to carry insurance, some of those, the town have to co-carry anything, even though it's not our property?
Yeah. Yeah, all our properties are covered for, for liability insurance, and the, and the buildings that we own are covered for non-reliability, for property damage, fire, but, uh-
And where is the funding? And where does the money for that come from? The initial money that came in donations?
No, the Park Association pays that, of donation.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Jerry Sharrow, also is the town not named as a co-insurer in that policy?
Pardon me, I did quite make out what you're saying, Jerry. Sorry.
Match. Is the town not also named as a co-insurer with the policy, with your liability policy?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, well, what do you see as the benefit of continuing the association, given the purpose of the association? Why not just donate the land to the town?
Well, we're not allowed to. The original deed of gift and the rank was made when the association was formed is that trustees shall not sell or encumber the property. So we can't. We're a corporation, you know, we're actually an existing corporation. And we own real estate. And we're tasked by the donor that we can't sell or encumber that property.
Any other questions for Mr. Vaughn? Certainly appreciate you bumping your vacation and giving us a call and talking to us about it. Very kind of you.
Well, you're very welcome. And I'm glad for the opportunity. It's nice to see everybody's faces, even if I can't see your faces.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you.
Okay, North Broad Street Park, LDI?
Yes, sir. A while ago, the town went ahead and heard from LDI that they were applying for a grant to make improvements at the property on North Broad Street, just across from North Alley. And they were successful in receiving a twenty-five thousand dollar match grant. The town had placed an option on the property. And based on the award of the grant, there's a few things that the staff in LDI are seeking at your next meeting. One would be authorization for the town to proceed with acquiring the property, funding for, the acquisition was included in your FY twenty-one budget. The other would be for the town and LDI to enter into a memorandum of agreement, basically that the town will proceed with making physical improvements to the property, the parking areas, the striping, the drainage, all of those physical improvements, utilizing the grant funding as well as additional funding out of the town resources. We believe that the cost for the physical improvements will be about fifty-nine thousand dollars. And that will have the town effectively spend about twenty-three thousand dollars. We believe that we have realized those savings through some of the funding in our police department budget that has been offset through the CARES Act funding. So we believe that there is sufficient funds in our FY twenty-one budget that weren't initially allocated towards this project, but can be reallocated within your general fund to make these improvements and allow both the town and LDI to meet the construction requirements of the award for the grant. So there is a draft of that memorandum of understanding that basically spells out that we will gladly spend some of their money, but we will also use some of the town's funds to make the improvements to this park. Right now, we are simply calling it the North Broad Street Park. If the council has a recommendation to change the name to something else, we'd be happy to have that be as discussion. But right now, we are proceeding with the North Broad Street Park as its name. Part of what LDI has committed to do, the original budget was about seventy-nine thousand dollars, and that was more of the park amenities, picnic benches, bike rack, benches, a sign that would allow both residents and tourists to come, get their picture. And kind of a, it is the entrance corridor, the northern entrance corridor into the town. So the expectation was to put some form of artwork that would allow people to recognize when they're entering the town limits. And LDI is going to work to secure those improvements once the town has put in the actual park facility.
And just to contextualize this, the scope of the town, this is across from the old Ford.
Yes, ma'am. Just west of North Alley from here.
And regarding what LDI is talking about, the goal is to make it something that is cool enough where people want to come to town just to take a picture of themselves. Where we find something that's static, it doesn't pick a lot of maintenance, but it's something where people are going to want to post it on Facebook or Twitter or Instagram.
Sure, I remember when they did the, a little bit further up the road, the LDI. The sidewalk, this kind of completes the sidewalk to nowhere. I'm thinking, it's going, sure, it's going to make the town look a lot better. The question I have is, I guess I can't tell if the land, the grass goes right up to the creek bed. I'm guessing that we're going to have people stand there playing in the creek at that point.
Well, there is a drop-off.
There is a drop-off?
Yes, sir. We're not looking to do any sort of great significant.
I guess people can stand on the bank there.
They could.
It's not going to be enough. It's much bank, I think, is the shilling, I think.
Oh, okay.
I think that's a little misleading.
Yeah, okay. I like the whole idea of having the entrance to town look a lot better.
It seems like we don't have as many parking spots as we did originally. Twelve or thirteen? We only have five or six?
Six or seven. There's one charging station.
LDI and the town have been working with RACI to put in the parking spaces, but also meet the ability to have the areas so that vehicles can turn safely and not back out onto Broad Street, as well as just meeting some of the, there are some storm sewer improvements that we're needing to make out there. And there's some other issues that would want us to not do any more significant improvements to the site. There... It's not natural land beneath some of the pavement out there. And rather than get into excavating it, we're simply looking to stabilize what we can and create a parking area that we feel confident will last into the future.
Any questions received on this?
Please give our thanks to LDI for the nice job.
Oh, one thing, when it says street light, so you may not, so I don't have this, but is that something that's going to be emitting into the parking area as well?
Kind of bleed over, yes, sir. Brian, you probably can speak more to that.
Yeah, I'm going to repurpose two of the old lights off the Main Street Bridge.
Okay.
And we're going to put, there, use those aqua-style lights, just like somebody's going to use two of them there.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian, you told me this once before, but on charging stations, it'd be free, wouldn't it? Because it costs more to set up the charge than it does for electricity.
Yeah, we'd have to run a data line, and then we have to set up a bowl of tape chargers for park activation. And by the time we pay all those fees, it's far more than the electricity.
So just like the two up at the Chamber, this town's getting really tourist happy and getting electric vehicles. I think it's great.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Meet with Jerry.